We are live.
Come on, guys, straight up.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to give a motion to have one curfew since now 2022. I'm going to get a motion to approve the village board getting minutes from April 7, 2022.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, yes. All right, citizens' comments. Kevin McMahon?
Yes, good evening, mayor, good evening, board. My name's Kevin McMahon. We are very excited to be back. Last year was our first annual yoga event where we would meet weekly and practice yoga at the Paper Mill Island, and we are back this year to seek a very similar application fee wave as we apply for the space at Paper Mill Island. Last year, we held in total 17 classes. Those were hour-long classes. We had 10 different teachers come in from out of town and teach the students, and overall, we had around 170 students. I would say 80% of those were from out-of-town students as well, so bringing a lot of, you know, residents, or not residents, but bringing a lot of locals into the area. I know that, you know, many different students found that it was becoming a weekly routine where they would go and then walk into the village for a nice little dinner that night. So, and we're hoping to again seek the fee waiver from the registration and to apply again this year. We would host our classes on Wednesdays from 5:30 to 6:30, just an hour-long, real minimal setup, so no, you know, abundant electronics or what have you, real minimal, just a matter of, you know, bringing a yoga mat or a beach towel and moving with your breath, and we welcome all, so.
How much do you charge the participants?
We don't charge. We don't charge. And then, I guess, from a liability standpoint, each teacher is, has their own insurance, and what we did last year was we just added an addendum to that insurance, including the village as part of the policy, so.
When you say 5:30 to 6:30, I assume you mean in the evening?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, just my only concern would be if you're checking with the clerk's office to make sure there's not a concert scheduled for Wednesday night somewhere during the summer that might be a conflict, but other than that, I didn't hear anything negative last year at all, only heard good stuff, so as long as the clerk is satisfied with that he's got the proper paperwork and insurance and that type of stuff, I see no problems.
One downside to last year was we didn't get the mayor out there to perform a downward-facing dolphin, so that's going to be our... That's as well this year.
I do Zumba once in a while.
There you go, just as long as we're moving, so.
Well, does anybody have any other questions, Kevin? Concerns? Mo, anything that went well last year as far as you know, right?
Yes.
And Kevin, would you be the contact person if somebody scheduled an event so that you, Mo could get ahold of you to say, hey, Wednesday, June, whatever, 29th, for instance?
Which we do have an event scheduled on the island, but...
Yeah, and events will, you know, take precedence, so, you know, we're very accommodating in that regard, and, you know, we just appreciate the space in general. It's such a beautiful space. A lot of tremendous compliments last year from people that weren't familiar with it, just in awe over it, and quite frankly, the community came back this year and said, are we doing that again, you know, so really positive memories from the local.
I think it's a great use of the island.
Yes.
You know, yoga, I'm not a yoga person, but I know my yoga is being in one with nature, and that's probably the best spot in the village to be in one with nature.
I would, I think everybody would agree with you, everyone's from there.
Can I just ask, do you, do you work from the stage? Is that where the, like, the instructor works on, or are you more out on the lawn?
Great question. The very first day, I taught from the stage, but then we leave it up to the instructor, and then we found that most instructors do prefer being off the stage, so I think I was the only one, just to try it out.
Okay.
Interesting enough, they actually like to use, because I participated with my wife in that, they like to use that area where the shed is going to be put.
Me. Proposed.
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 That's what I was curious about.
Do you use the stage if you have rain?
Yes, yeah, so actually, the very last day, September 29th last year, it was quite cold, but we were still able to get it in the last practice in. It just so happened it was raining, so we went under the stage and it was covered, you know, so it was a nice ending for the year, so.
Can anybody just show up to this, or do they have to sign on?
There is a registration through a studio in Syracuse, but it's merely just the formality of it, right, so we have the attendance, right, we can, you know, report out metrics of who's attending, where they're from and what have you, and be able to, you know, develop like a KPI in a sense of our power of performing based off of who registers.
Does the village clerk's office have that information about how to register if the village office gets called?
Yes, I had it from last year.
Okay.
Maybe that's something we could put on our website, so if someone requires, you could say, you know, you can get the link through our website or whatever.
Right, I think we did do that last year, and we have it on Facebook, too.
Perfect.
Great.
So we add that to the, do we add that to the agenda, then?
I think we could probably just do a resolution right now instead of adding it.
We need a motion to waive the fee, is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
I could make that motion to waive the fee for the yoga classes on Wednesday evenings.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, very?
Of course, thank you, mayor.
Kevin, I'll email you tomorrow the list so far of concerts.
Okay, thank you, Mo.
All right, next we'll do trustees' comments. We'll start with Eric.
I just want to remind people the public library election and budget votes coming up on April 28th from 9 to 9. Also, our little local brewery, our little mom-and-pop brewery, I should say, obviously Budweiser's a great brewery for us, but WT Brews has teamed up with 19 other local breweries to raise money for a humanitarian effort for Ukraine, and they're releasing a special beer that all these breweries came together to brew. They're releasing that on a Friday, so if people like to drink, I checked it out, it's a good cause. And I'll stick to the rest of the agenda.
All right, Ruth?
I'll just stick with the agenda, thank you.
Okay, Bruce?
I'd like to add to the agenda. Under new business, I'd like to add a motion to authorize the DPW superintendent to secure bids for the installation of the culvert on Warner Ave and the cleaning of the stream bed as part of the tannery creek improvement project to be funded with ARPA monies. I have that written down.
Good, because you lost me in installation.
Anything else, Bruce?
I liked what Eric was doing. Today online, I noticed there's a top 10 burgers in New York State, and one of them is from the Angry Garlic, so if you're out there supporting local businesses, you can go vote for a local burger.
Yep, they had overall a bigger vote and got it down to 10, and they're in that top 10. I'm glad you brought that up.
I forgot which one it is.
Anybody that wants to help Angry Garlic?
Have a burger.
Their burgers.
And if you've seen any photos, they're working point feverishly on the old block 24 to turn that into the Angry Smokehouse, so I guess sometime late in June, it may be ready, and that'll be something to look forward to.
Probably on June 29th.
Is that it, Bruce?
Yes, other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, Meg?
Just the agenda for me, thank you.
Okay, Chuck?
You have the agenda, I'll do, thanks.
All right, Nate?
I do have one thing I want to talk about, is that I'm really excited and proud of the athletic department so far for Bonnsville High School. We are currently boasting an undefeated and nationally-ranked boys' lacrosse team, a nationally-ranked and undefeated girls' lacrosse team, an undefeated tennis team, an undefeated boys' baseball team, an undefeated softball team, and I'm unclear on the wins and losses for track, but I imagine they're doing pretty well, and I'm just, you know, I'm proud of how the athletic department and all the kids are doing this year, so, and outside of that, yeah, the agenda.
I'm glad as an old athlete that you stuck up for the athletic department. They have been off to a great start. I know the lacrosse team has already beaten West Genesee, which is always a huge milestone in a season. Even though West Genesee isn't quite what they used to be, it's still, they're playing, matter of fact, they're playing right now at Falmouth, it's a big game for them tonight.
Yep.
And thanks for bringing that up, Nate, appreciate that.
No problem.
Got a couple things to throw out to people. I did get a message today from Dave Smith, an engineer for the state highway people. I had talked to him a couple years ago about getting Syracuse Street paved when they were doing Route 48 from the thruway to the village line, and said, why don't you just go right to the Four Corners? He said, there's not money set aside for that, so we can't do it, and he said it will probably be a year or two at least before he got to us. So I sent him another message, matter of fact, this morning, asking what the status was. He didn't answer me at about 5:30 tonight and said that they had hoped that the Syracuse Metropolitan Transportation Council would secure federal money to do that. There wasn't enough federal money to do it, so they are going to use state funding to do a mill and fill project. Isn't like a complete rip-up of the street and put a whole new street down, but they will do up and down on Syracuse Street, mill the street and fill it in, and some of the crazy potholes that people have had to deal with for years, hopefully will be taken care of at least for a while. Probably won't happen until later in the summer, so hopefully Chuck will be aware when they are going to do it, so anything that we have to do to be a part of it, we will be aware. That's been a nightmare stretch of street on Syracuse Street, and the sad part is that everybody thinks it's our fault because it's a village street, and that's the sympathy comment that I use every time I talk to the state, is to say that we get blamed, and please come through for us. So they are going to do something. It'll be better than nothing, and hopefully it'll last a few years, and people will at least be pleased to know that they won't have some of those big potholes over on Syracuse Street. I've been in contact again with the Canal Corporation. The property over by what we call the wall, the boats tied up and the visitor center is state property for those who aren't aware of it, and we used to have a lease that expired at the end of 2019, and then with the COVID, they didn't push leases at all, so they had sent me a copy of a lease proposal and also a use permit proposal. I'm not 100% sure what the differences are. Gal tried to explain it to me. Wasn't a great explanation, so I just forwarded that to Bob and to Joe Fertesi, because I know Joe loves to read contracts, and they could give us an idea which way would be the best to go. The Canal people started suggesting that the use permit is probably the better way, because then it's like, it's like it's your property until the state says it isn't, so you could do things to it. I mentioned the spit off of at the end of Marl Street, and she said, oh yeah, if you get a use permit for that, and you wanted to go in there and clean that up and put a couple benches in and stuff, you could, with a use permit, if you have a lease, you have to go to the state for permission for stuff like that, so I'll wait for what I hear from the attorneys on the best way for us to go. I did want to mention a couple dates for people to remember. The 29th of this month is Arbor Day. I know there's an Earth Day cleanup coming. I'm going to check with Chuck tomorrow to see if there's a way for us to maybe provide a truck where people could put bags of brush that they pick up, and, you know, they're talking about cleaning all on waterways. Hopefully, they would go down on Meadow Street and clean up all on the riverbank, all the way down to the park. That would be nice to have that nicely cleaned up for the summer, and so if anybody out there is interested in that as an Earth Day project, feel free to contact me at Village Hall, and Chuck, think about that and whether or not we can put a truck somewhere where they can put garbage bags full of brush. I think we've done that before.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
We are working on that. The sign-up is through OCR, and we do have a couple trucks that we're going to be putting out, but you sign up with them. Louis has been talking to different groups, and they give them a spot, and we're going to be putting a truck, I believe, on Meadow Street, and...
Okay, good.
So we are working on it. There is, there is some interest in it. We've had some phone calls on it this week.
You're one step ahead of me, great. The 30th of this month is the Volunteer of the Year Dinner at the Tost on the Green. The 21st of May is the Village Garage Sale. Check with the Chamber of Commerce if you have any questions, but you sign up with them, and then they give a list of people who want to know where sales are going on all through the village, and hopefully we'll get a lot of people wandering through the village that day, buying a lot of stuff at your garages, and then maybe stopping and grabbing a sandwich at one of our restaurants. The 30th of May is our Memorial Day Parade at 10 o'clock in the morning, and the 16th of July is Margarita Fest, if I recall right. So we have kind of a busy stretch, a lot of things going on in the village, and that's not even, not even the fact that I know that the two towns are working out an arrangement for four free concerts on Tuesday nights. You know, in the past, we've had, with the cooperation of the town, we've had free concerts. They got a late start this year, and it looks like they've got four dates arranged that have been coming out soon, I'm sure, and then our promoter is working on, I saw another one just came out today, that you can buy tickets for, it's sort of like a Loud Alusia-type thing from 95X, so that's at least four or five that are on the ticket site that you can buy tickets, and I think he's gotten nine of 10, he's penciled it, so a lot of things going on in the island, it's going to be busy and involved, so. I think that's all I have. We'll go to department heads. Our attorney?
Mayor, I'm just going to add that I am going to meet with representatives of both towns on Tuesday regarding the Tuesday concerts that they're going to be putting on. They would like to kind of formalize things, so that everybody knows who's supposed to be doing what during those concerts and who needs to be on call or whatever, so we'll finalize that, and I'll let everybody know what their thoughts are at the meeting, but I'll be representing the village, and I've asked Chuck to come along with me.
Very good. Great, thanks, Bob.
Other than that, I'll stick with you, and I will get back to you on the permit versus lease. I've talked with Joe, and I have a call into the Canal, too.
Beautiful. I can give you a name of somebody if you need, the specific person I was talking with. All right, move on to the village clerk, Mo.
I'll just stick to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Code officer, Greg?
For tonight, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. Is Mark there, pressure?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, I just have a couple things. Number one, I just want to make the board aware and the continuing improvement of our fraud protection on our bank accounts. We've implemented the Positive Pay service on all of our checking accounts, which means that there are no checks that can clear those accounts that aren't written by us, and we've informed the bank that we wrote them. That's an electronic process where we send them a file of those things, so really reduces the chance of somebody submitting a phony check, you know, to one of our accounts, and us not catching it or catching it after they've already gotten away with it. The, that's the first step toward making electronic signatures on the checks, too, so it won't require me to sign checks every time after an abstract is produced, and it won't require someone in my absence to be able to do it also. It's a process where it's an electronic signature. Having been in the business a long time, the signature is the last thing on the check and probably the least effective thing to prevent fraud. It just, the banks will tell you they don't look at the signatures anymore, and the checks just go through, and unless somebody contests one, they get paid. So my former employer would produce 6,000 or 7,000 electronic checks a month with an electronic sign on. They just don't get signed anymore. So there's a couple of products that I'm looking at. It'll be probably summertime, but just why, be aware that we keep working on improving, strengthening the banking relationships that we have, and maximizing the return that we get from those financial institutions, so. I think you all know that the Lysander Water Escrow was transferred. I want you to be aware of that, too, to the water account. It's done on the financial end, and I think that is the, that's it. Other than that, unless there's any questions, just the agenda.
The, you say, transferred to the water account. Where into the water?
The water checking account, the general water operating account.
So it's like a reserve fund balance right now?
Yes, and probably one of the things that's on the treasurer to-do list for sometime this year is to develop some metrics for what we keep in operating accounts and what we move to savings or reserve accounts, and how we manage that, so it's not, it's done by a process where we reach thresholds and we say, okay, time to move some money.
Because there was a little pocket of money.
Yeah.
I don't know what, it's not an account, that was for water source development?
Right.
Perhaps at some point down the road, we might seed some of this money into it.
Good question. I'll have to see if I can find where that's earmarked or whatever, but, yeah, to maximize the return on those bank accounts, if we have a process where the bank knows and we know what funds we're going to be keeping where and for how long, then we can get a better return.
Sure.
Very good. You're a busy boy. That sheet of things that you've been working on is like a year's worth of work that you've been doing in a month. Very good. We appreciate all the hard work you've been doing.
Thank you.
All right, move on to the senior side. Ruth?
Just a couple things. Our summer concert series has started. The next one is scheduled for Monday, May 16th at 2:30. It's George Leah. He's a local musician that most of our folks are familiar with. I'll bring your lawn chair. It should be outside, weather permitting. Also, I want to thank the sponsors for this year, Barnes Memorial, Bell Tours, Flaherty Funeral Home, Red Mill Manor, and the Canton Woods Board, and there'll be a concert basically every month through October, so folks know that. Also, the defensive drumming class is back. That was one thing that people have been looking for and asking for. The first class is scheduled for May 25th. It's already fall, so plan on attending one in June, on June 22nd. If you're interested in that, please call right away and get yourself registered because the classes fill up so quickly. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Ruth.
Yep.
Public Works, Chuck?
We've been through a couple times with brush now, with, and the brush pickup programs is going well. The sweeper went out today to try to catch up on, start on some of the sweeping. Of course, this week, we had another little glitch about having to go out and put some salt down. We didn't go out, but we were close to where we thought we were going to have to start salting again. The, we're, the highway department's been trimming trees, and they've gotten much further than they ever dreamt they would. They ended up, they ended up getting through Downer Street, Tappan Street, Locke Street, and East Oneida Street, and they just, we didn't know we were going to get the money, the budget money to have a company come in and do that, and during some of the times this winter, when the guys were in between plowing and working on projects, they get out and get all that done. It's a ton of work, and it was getting so the plow trucks were hitting the trees, you know, plow trucks, garbage trucks, and it's very visible in Downer and Tappan, but they did a great job with that, and that's moving right along. The sidewalk program has started across from the diner in front of Kenny's there. That's going very well. Today, we're up on Swigill Street, and next week, I think we're going to be down on the East Genesee portion of that. The contractor we have is just, he just makes some time, and that's going very, very well. Been working with the promoter on the island about the concerts this coming, this summer, just to see what they want to bring in here for, to have their concession stands. We've worked with the board on that. We're going to try to get that worked out here in the next couple of weeks. Other than that, was there questions, or else?
No questions? All right, we'll move on to police. Steve?
Thank you, mayor. I know I'm going to probably sound like I repeat myself very, very often here, and the mayor's echoed my comments, but I would just like to echo that I've said many times in the past, if people could please lock their car doors, that would be most appreciative to us. It would help prevent crime. Oftentimes, people say to me, what can we do to help the police department? If you locked your car doors, you would be helping us immensely. We've had many incidents, both in the village and then outside in the outline areas, the greater Bonnsville area, where vehicles have been stolen, items of value have been taken out of cars, and almost inevitably and invariably, they are not from vehicles that are locked. They are unlocked vehicles that people have left the keys in, and cars get stolen, and they've left valuables in there, and those valuables get taken. There's groups that go around and purposefully look for unlocked vehicles. They're not smashing windows to smash into vehicles, they're just looking for unlocked vehicles, so just locking your car doors at night really does make a difference. It provides greater safety for the community. I know, mayor, you've mentioned that many times as well with Shelley, and I apologize to the folks out there that have heard this before and have taken it to heart and are doing it. I greatly appreciate those people, but if this is the first time you've heard it, please get your key fob and push the lock button at nighttime, and that'll be a big help to us. And then, mayor, trustee Shepherd asked me to update the board and the citizens. I posted on my LinkedIn page, as you know, I've been very active in the New York State Association Chiefs of Police for a number of years. I am the New York State rep to the International Association Chiefs of Police. Their state association is broken up into four sections in the state. One of those is the North Atlantic region from Maryland on north. About three, four weeks ago now, I was selected by the members of that group as the chairman for the North Atlantic region. It doesn't require a great deal of work on my part. Basically, I chair a monthly Zoom meeting amongst all the states in that region where we exchange information that's coming from the IACP, as well as what's going on with different states in our geographical area that we represent, so it's a great opportunity for me. I was the vice chair, and the chairman from Pennsylvania got himself elected as sheriff of the county where he resides, so he had to step down, so the members voted me in. Looking forward to the opportunity, and I think it'll benefit the residents and the community as well, because we're going to be getting information directly from the International Association Chiefs of Police, and hopefully implementing some things that we can utilize here to improve our organization.
Congratulations, chief. That's, that's got to be great for us, because you got to soak up some of that information, bring it back here and help us, and, who knows, you may be emperor of the world before you're done.
That's not my plan, so... That's not my plan, so I'll leave that to the politicians, as it were.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Officer. We'll move on to pending business. Can I get a motion to rescind Resolution Number 11 slash 2022 of Winnie Nicholas A. Newcomb as a full-time police officer effective May 1st, 2022, at a salary of $73,566?
I'll motion.
Second.
Chief, you want to say anything about this?
No, I briefed the board, and during the work session, Matt.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New business. I get a motion supporting participation in the CNY Stormwater Coalition Staff Services and Education Compliance Assistance Program from January 1st through December 31st, 2022, and agree to fund its portion of the program cost in the amount of $3,600.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Period. Item B, can I get a motion to appoint the following as seasonal laborers in the Parks Department with an effective date to be determined by the superintendent of Public Works? Arthur Humboldt at $20 per hour, Andrew Rice at $17 per hour, Patrick Lamoran at $17 per hour, and John Oletta at $17 per hour.
Moved. Second.
This is our, basically our mowing crew and our flower watering person.
Are any of these returnees, Chuck?
No, they're all new, and Chip Humboldt had told me last year he wasn't even able to come back, and we were crushed because he just does a fantastic job. Well, he's retired, and the other part-time job happened to fall through, and I called him and just asked him, actually, I called him and asked him if he'd quit the job yet. And he just said, "No, but there is a delay on that," but he would come back and train somebody, or he would come back and at least work through August, which we were thrilled because we would have to start all over again. He's done such a fantastic job. The place looks great because of him, and he's going to get some of the new people up and running, and, because everybody else is new, including the watering guys. The two younger kids that mowed, we hired as full-time employees. And then Chip thought he was going to come one more year, and then he wanted to try something else, and that's just delayed a little bit for him, so we're thrilled he's back, and we found a few other people.
This is, it's nice to have an adult crew. It was always nice to have the kids, one from college and stuff, but they always go back in the middle of August and leave you short for the rest of the summer, and now you'll have these guys that assume will stick around until you're done mowing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item C. All right, this is another proclamation. I need a motion to proclaim Monday, May 30th, 2022, as Memorial Day in the village. Get a motion and a second, and I will read the proclamation, and at the end, we'll approve it. Got your motion?
Moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Whereas Memorial Day is a time to reflect on the past, remembering those who helped guarantee our freedom, should you set aside a day to remember the accomplishments of men and women of valor and courage, and whereas our founding fathers had the wisdom to assure freedom guaranteed and protected by the Constitution of the United States more than 200 years ago, Americans have answered the call of service, and that honorable service performed in the defense of our nation and her cause in time of war is the highest form of citizenship. And whereas the men and women who served in the armed forces of the Grand Army of the Republic, World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, the Persian Gulf, and now wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, have made heroic sacrifices to preserve freedom. And whereas we honor the memory of those killed in action, those who are missing in action, and all who may still be prisoners of war, that they will be returned without delay. We ask for special blessings for those now in Iraq. And whereas the services just performed by these millions of gallant Americans have demonstrated the willingness of our nation to meet the challenges of those forces wishing to subjugate individual determination through army conflict, and whereas the Bollesville Memorial Day Committee wishes to keep the traditional day of May 30th as a day to commemorate Memorial Day in Bollesville, and whereas Memorial Day was established by General Order Number 11 on 5/5/1868 to commemorate fallen comrades who died in defense of their country. And whereas we remember veterans of all wars and show our appreciation with our vigilance, if not our presence, we will ensure that they did not die in vain. And therefore, I, Richard Clark, Mayor of the Village of Bollesville, County of Anadaga, State of New York, declare Monday, May 30th, 2022, to be Memorial Day in the Village of Bollesville to honor those men and women who paid the ultimate price to preserve the principles of freedom. In witness whereof, I have unpaired and four set my hand and caused to be affixed the official seal of the Village of Bollesville, Anadaga County, New York, on this 21st day of April, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. And I will sign that proclamation as we speak. I will get that to mouth. Okay. Item C is taken care of. Item D, can I get a motion to set a public hearing for the adoption of an updated code for the administration of code enforcement on Thursday, May 19, 2022, at 7:30 p.m.?
Moved. Real quick, Greg, can you explain a little bit what this is?
New York State has developed a new, what they call Part 1203. It's the state law that governs code enforcement administration across the state, and the individual municipalities have to adopt a local law with the updated language that the state has put forth. So there's updated definitions, there's updated code requirements, and the state is requiring us to adopt this by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll second.
We need a second.
I'll second.
We need a second. I'm sorry. I'm getting too fast for myself there. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. Item P, can I get a motion to set a public hearing for the adoption of the New York State Stretch Energy Code on Thursday, May 19, 2022, at 7:35 p.m.?
I'll move.
Once again, Greg, I think you could explain this one as well. So I want people to be informed of what these are.
Second it for discussion.
Second it for discussion, sorry.
That, that works. The New York State Stretch Energy Code is a little bit more strict energy code than the New York State Energy Code. Basically, it provides a greater quality of construction for new homes and commercial properties, reduced energy costs, better comfort, better air quality in the homes. It's a pretty minimal cost for a new home. It's in the range of $2,000, what it would add to the cost of a 1,500, 2,000 square foot home, or wait, 2,000 square foot home, yeah. It's roughly a six-year payback period on the energy savings, and it's also something that the state's trying to get municipalities to adopt to help reduce New York State's energy use. And as a result, they are offering municipalities a $5,000 grant to adopt this code. And that's that.
Everybody comfortable with that explanation? Did we, did we get a second to the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. Item F, can I get a motion to allow the TPW Superintendent to secure bids for the installation of the culvert at Warner, on Warner Avenue, to be paid for with RPA funds? Is there any more that motion needs to be included?
Yes. After Warner Ave is and cleaning of the stream bed as part of the Danery Creek Improvement Project.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so can I get somebody to make a motion?
I'll make it. I'll second his motion.
Just a second. Any questions at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's the end of our agenda. Before we go to pay bills, is there anything else that needs to be discussed? Or anybody?
Mike? No second.
No.
I get it.
No second.
Nothing.
We're good.
Okay. Can I get a motion to pay bills as audited?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:11?
I move in honor of Andy Dryden.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. See everybody on Thursday night.